Where did you go find?
I went to my SEMA invitation. Okay. We want a baked potato with some broccoli and some ratatouille.
You're welcome.
Yep. Wow, storm morning through Wednesday at 8:00 PM. Yep. That was muted.
Face there.
Well, I'm here.
I'm waiting for John and Catherine, I think.
I just showed up.
Yeah, I see John.
Okay.
Hi Sarah, I'm here.
Hi, how you doing, John? I've done something to my-
Elephants tethered.
My solar screen just like shook big time. I said, oh boy.
Good idea.
Has anybody seen Catherine on?
Not yet.
Okay.
But it's, uh-
Couple of minutes.
Got another minute or so, minute and a half.
Yeah. I've somehow lost stuff on my screen, the time on my screen. I hit something and everything went haywire. Story of my life.
Yeah. This is technology wonderful. Let's say if we didn't have all this stuff, we'd probably all be sitting here in the dark just having a drink.
Still trying to figure out what the problem is for that.
Who says we're not?
Gail Hunter, am I correct you're on?
I am.
Great. We'll give it one more minute while we wait for Catherine.
I just spoke with Catherine. She's trying to get on and has been kicked off. Hopefully she'll be back on soon.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff Engler. Carolyn Malletta.
Oh, no, no, no talking.
It is 7:03 on Tuesday, October 27th.
Hey, this is Catherine Howe. I am working on getting my computer to work, but for now I'm here on my phone.
Okay, thank you Catherine.
Sorry guys.
Okay. It is 7:04 PM on Tuesday, October 26th, and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. I also will go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing. We have some concerns about amongst our board members that people are losing power intermittently. So I want to make sure I get the public hearing opened and then I want to discuss a possibility of a continuance date in case we lose our connectivity. So I will now open the public hearing for the application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LOC for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136 unit apartment complex to be known as the Sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021 at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. Do I have a second to open the meeting?
Second.
Jim Dietrich seconds. Okay. I'll take a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
James? James Mitchell?
Yes.
Um. John?
Approved.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Okay. The public meeting is open. I'll say a few introductory comments and then we'll establish a continuance date. Thank you all for coming. I'm Sarah Malisch, the ZBA Chair. With me, I have four other full board members, Brian Solacey, Catherine Howe, John Benneris, and James Mitchell. We also have an attendance, Sean Zahn, the first alternate, and Jim Dietrich, the second alternate. All members will be participating in the meeting, but only five will vote. We will also have support from Sue Brown, the town planner, Ezra Glenn, our 40B consultant and towns, town council. The meeting is being recorded and the recording will be loaded to the agenda center on the town website. I expect this will be the first of many meetings on the comprehensive permit application. The main purpose of this meeting is to establish the process that will be followed, discuss safe harbor, and hear a presentation from the developer. There will not be any input from the public today on the merits of the comprehensive permit. In future meetings, we will discuss specific components of the application and will take public input specific to the topic on the agenda. We will be posting all materials on the Towns 40B website page under the appropriate topic, including all correspondence and reports. All correspondence should be sent to Gail Hunter in Town Hall. She will work with me to make sure that we review them and get them up on the website appropriately. This is not business as usual for the zoning board of appeals as we must consider normal ZBA issues as well as issues normally made by, reviewed by other town boards. This will be a methodical process in which we request peer review reports from experts and input from other town boards and departments. The developer has requested 22 waivers of our local zoning bylaw. We will review each waiver request, have the developer justify why the waiver is necessary to make the project economically viable and that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local concerns protected under the bylaw. We will also be reviewing the list of items cited in the Mass Housing Financing Agency project eligibility letter, which listed a number of items on which the developer was directed to negotiate with us. The members of the zoning board of appeals are all volunteers and didn't expect to receive a 40B comprehensive permit for review. This is an emotional issue for town residents, including members of the board. The members of the board have an obligation to put aside their personal opinions on the project and review the application based on the merits of the information provided. So please do not criticize them personally because what they say in the meetings may not be their personal preference. One of our, one of the hot topics in town is whether the ZBA can invoke a safe harbor provision by asking DHCD for certification of the town's compliance with its approved housing production plan. We will discuss that shortly, but first I would like to introduce our consultant on this project, Ezra Glenn, if he's on the phone. I haven't seen him. if he's on the phone, I haven't seen him. Mass Housing has provided the town with a grant to pay the services, but he is a private consultant that we selected and is working for us. Mr. Glenn runs a nonprofit organization providing planning and consulting services with experience in 40B developments. He also teaches in the Masters in City Planning Program at MIT. He is here to help us navigate through this complex comprehensive permit. Mr. Glenn, are you on the call and do you have anything you would like to add?
Yep, right here.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope the, if the sound's not okay, let me know. But thank you so much for the introduction and for the overview. I think there are a number of 40B processes that I've been part of and I wish they all began with a chair stating things as clearly and respectfully as that. I think it's really nice to set the tone because these can be difficult processes. I would like to reiterate what you said, that this is not business as usual for the zoning board. This is a state process that your local board is charged with implementing, but it's not. You could look all through your, your local bylaws and you wouldn't find Chapter 40B in it because it's a state law. Just very quickly, I'm not going to give a whole overview and I know you have some good material on the town website about it and I'd encourage people to look at that as well as at DHCD's website. But I'll just quickly let people know, this is a state law that was adopted back in 1969, so a little over 50 years ago. Back that, if you can remember 1969, that's back when there was a lot of concern about fair housing. In fact, it's just after the federal Fair Housing Act was passed and there was a concern locally in Massachusetts that as much as we love zoning and we love local control of land use, there was a concern that zoning could lead to certain communities being exclusionary under, under fair housing. And so this chapter was created to provide a process by which a community that didn't have a certain quota of affordable housing, a developer could come in and propose to build affordable housing that would not meet your local zoning and in fact, might not meet all kinds of local rules. So that's the first thing is just to be aware that what is likely to come out of this process if approved is not going to meet local zoning. And I think that can be difficult for people because they've become very attached to the zoning. They're used to viewing that as a protection. In most cases it is, but here it's a different process. Under the law, no, it's not that any developer can propose this. You need to be a certain eligible developer and I'll just quickly mention there are three types. You can be a public agency, a nonprofit, or a limited equity partnership that agrees to limit the profits from the development. And that was done because they, the state didn't want Chapter 40B to be a way that developers could override zoning and make a huge profit. They wanted a way that mission-driven developers could invoke this state law. It can be for ownership or rental, but the development must have at least 25% affordable units under the state's requirement, the state's threshold. There's some situations where that can be reduced to 20 if they're more deeply affordable, but, but in general it's a 25% affordability. So that's the second thing to remember, the, the units are not all affordable necessarily, only a certain threshold that allows you to then apply for a 40B. There are three key aspects of 40B. The first is it is, as, as the chair mentioned, it's called a comprehensive permit. And the key there is the comprehensive nature, that you may have many different local bylaws that apply to development. This developer does not need to go to all the different boards and officials that enforce those local bylaws. There is a one-stop shop and the Mass General Court, in their wisdom, said the zoning board is the best able to kind of pull that together in a comprehensive way. So the zoning board is sitting not just as the zoning board, but as the zoning board, the planning board, the conservation commission, in the case of any local wetlands bylaw, and maybe the historic preservation commission in the course of any local historic preservation law, anything local, the zoning board can be asked to grant a waiver for tonight. Keep in mind, I said local. The state did not grant this process to provide exemptions from any state laws or any federal laws. So this project, no matter what you do, must still comply with ADA, must comply with 21E, must comply with the State Wetlands Act, and a number of it must comply with building code. All of those laws still apply and there's nothing you can do to exempt the developer from it. Second, it is flexible. Beyond what I just said, the developer may ask for a waiver of any local bylaw and, and argue that that's necessary in order to build what they need to build, melt. And then thirdly, and this is a very important point to get out, it's an expedited process. Often the timeline is driven largely by the zoning board. You know, you wait until you're sure the project is ripe and then you make a decision. Under Chapter 40B, there are strict limits on how quickly you have to review something. One of the reasons we're meeting today is you had exactly 30 days to open the hearing and I believe if we waited till tomorrow, the developer could make an argument that they had the right to just build this by right because you, you failed to open the hearing in time. Once you open the hearing, you have 180 days to close the hearing and then 40 days to render a decision. Over that time, it is possible to get extensions. Often we look at that later on down the road. If we're making progress and we feel we need another month or two, we ask the applicant for an extension and that is often granted, but we really do need to recognize that it's a quick process. 180 days, that's a half a year, but it can go really quickly when we're dealing with complex issues. That said, it's still a very full process. Everything that we need to look at, we need to look at. And we have every right to ask for whatever information we want. We can ask the developer to fund peer review experts for us to look at those. We can refer all the materials to every single office in town, ask the different officials to give their input to see if they need more information. This is not a process that is supposed to be shoddy, just quick and efficient. And then lastly, and then I'll turn it back to the chair. In general, you must entertain these applications, but there, there are certain thresholds that a town could pass, which would mean you didn't need to entertain them. The most obvious one is if you have 10% affordable housing, then you can, the moment it comes in the door, you can say, we're not interested in entertaining this. And the state will uphold that because you've already met your 10%. There are other thresholds related to the number of, the, the acreage of land in the town that is covered by affordable housing. There are other ones related to if, how many 40B processes you have in front of you at the moment or the size of a project. And then probably most importantly is the safe harbor, I think that you were mentioning of progress towards your approved housing production plan. There is a process by which if you've made progress towards your plan, you can be granted a temporary one or two-year safe harbor. So I'm going to turn it back to you. I'm actually not allowed out of the contract to give a whole lot of advice about, you know, you know, calling the odds on those, but it is a process that along with those, those deadlines, you have only 15 days to decide you want to invoke that. After 15 days go by, you essentially lose your opportunity under the statute or under the regulations to say, we think that we don't need to entertain this process. So it is an important decision to make early so that later on down the road, there's no second guessing. So I'm happy to entertain questions or turn it right back to the chair, thanks.
Thank you. So one thing, just given the weather, I would like to talk about is if perchance we were to be disconnected, lose our connectivity, whether we can continue to next week, Tuesday, November 2nd. That, that's only if we don't get through the meeting as intended, otherwise we'd be continuing it to sometime in December. Members of the board, is that acceptable to you? Next Tuesday?
Yes.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, Madam Chairman, that Tuesday is a contingency date is acceptable.
Thank you very much. I will then proceed with the meeting and hope we don't need that. As Chair, I've decided to adjust the order of the agenda and we'll have the board discuss the parameters allowed to claim a safe harbor and make a determination as to whether we wish to pursue it. As Mr. Glenn mentioned, we have to make that determination and the filing within 15 days if we wish to go for that, so it's important that we conclude that discussion tonight. The 40B has a number of safe harbor provisions, some are statutory within the 40B statute itself. As Mr. Glenn mentioned, one is that 10% of our year-round housing units are eligible for SHI. In Manchester, we have 2,275 units. We have 115 on the SHI, which means we only have 5.05%. Therefore, we don't qualify under that safe harbor parameter. The other is if the sites of SHI-eligible units exceed 1.5% of the total land area that's available for residential, commercial, and industrial use. 1.5% is about 68 acres and we have 10 acres in our SHI unit, so we don't qualify under that safe harbor. The other safe hars are available not by regulation, but through guidelines, not through the statute. One is a large-scale project where the total units are greater than 6% of the total housing units. If you take the 2,275 units times .06, you get 136.5 and this project contains 136 units, so it doesn't qualify as a large project. The other, as Mr. Glenn mentioned, is municipal compliance with the goals of an approved housing production plan. We have an approved plan and it requires that new affordable units of 1.5% per year, which would be 11 units, are SHI-eligible units. Under current local action unit guidelines, units can be added to the SHI if they are deed restricted and leased under an approved fair housing marketing plan, thereby requiring units occupied by income-eligible households to be vacated and released to be approved. In May of 2021, NSCDC purchased the Bata House Lane apartment buildings, which was made possible by over 414,000 in donations from residents to the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust and over $800,000 made by residents directly to the NSCDC. The property includes 29 units in which 62% of the existing tenants have income below 80% of AMI and 52% of existing tenants have income below 60% of AMI. 25% of the units must be affordable to include all units in the SHI. A fair housing marketing plan has been created and the units have been advertised for income-eligible tenants at 60% of AMI. Ultimately, 100% of the units will be affordable at 60% of AMI. Since the landlord does not wish to evict any existing tenants, units occupied by income-eligible tenants cannot be included on the SHI. In October, the Board of Selectmen sent a letter to DHCD asking them to reconsider their guidelines to include deed-restricted units, currently leased income-eligible tenants to be placed on the SSHI. If DHCD changes the guideline, we would be in compliance with the goals of our approved housing production plan to be eligible to request the safe harbor. The question is, do we want to consider making that request? So I will make a motion and then if it's seconded, we'll have a discussion on that. I move that the zoning board of appeals votes, one, pursuant to 760 CMR 56.038, to invoke the safe harbor provision of 760 CMR 56.034F, two, to request that the town submit a request to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for certification of the town's compliance with its approved housing production plan. And three, to request the chair work with town council to prepare and send a notice to the applicant and DHCD that the board considers the denial of the requested comprehensive permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements upon such comprehensive permit would be consistent with local needs as a matter of law. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
James Mitchell seconds. Take a roll, call, vote, James?
Yes, I approve of this motion.
Sorry, no, we're not taking a vote yet, sorry. I have the motion seconded and we'll now have discussion. Do members of, of the board have questions on what I presented? Do you have a sense of how you feel about it? Where do you stand?
This is Catherine Howe. So Sarah, you had said that we somehow asked, we sent a letter asking the agency to reconsider their guidelines. Was there any response to that letter?
That was just sent, it was sent in October. So there has been no response.
Okay, so we sent a letter and then we would just move ahead with this request saying, hey, we know we sent you a letter and you haven't responded to it yet, but we have this in front of us and we'd like you to consider it anyway, sort of thing?
Right, so the, the question is, is does that represent progress on our, on the goals of our housing production plan? Even though we didn't add the 11 units to the SHI?
Makes sense, and it's only 11 units which will be added, not the full 20?
No, no, the 11 is the minimum. Under, in order to add, for rental properties, to add 100% of the units, you need 25% that are eligible. So in this case, if you look at the, the income eligibility of existing tenants, it's at 52%.
Okay.
But, but for the, the aspect of the law that says you can't count those unless you evict, evict the tenants and find new tenants under your fair housing marketing plan. And those are Manchester residents and the landlord does not want to evict them for the purpose of getting them onto the SHI, so that's why the Board of Selectmen.
One other question, so if we were to request safe harbor, does that stay the 180-day clock that we're under right now?
Yes, what happens is we have to make the submission with backup documentation within 15 days. The applicant has 15 days to respond and then DHCD has 30 days within which to make a decision. So it's up to 60 days that would extend out 180 days based on what actually happened.
So let's just say it got denied. We would just show up right back here, right like we are now. We just start the whole meeting over again. There's really not a, we haven't lost any time, you know, off the clock, so to speak. And is there another, is there any other downside that I'm missing here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
It's, it's certainly not a guaranteed outcome.
Right.
But, you know, there certainly has been talk in town and, and, you know, my, my opinion is why not have the state make the ruling for us?
Right, let them decide if it qualifies or not.
Right, because there are only guidelines. And DHCD can change its guidelines if it so desires.
Yeah.
Sarah? Brian?
Brian.
We, we speak about eviction, all right? Is that just the actual, the entire process had to be complete before the, as far as evicting all current tenants? Or is it just started when they notice a quit? How does, when is the, when is the state recognized that we're making progress even with the eviction process?
So in, in order to, you, you have to deed restrict the unit and you have to offer the unit under a fair housing market plan. and you have to offer the unit under a fair housing market plan. And the Powderhouse Hill, Powderhouse Lane has advertised in the Gloucester Daily Times for those units, that those units are available. Yes, Mr. Engler?
Madam Chairman, a couple, and for the record, I know this is the first introduction, and I was waiting to our presentation, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't raise a couple key points. One, the hearing is stayed, but the 180 days is not changed. So the zoning board, should it declare safe harbor, will have less time to review the application. Two, and this is my business, you know, shoot the messenger, there's no shot DHCD is gonna alleviate the requirement of affirmative fair housing marketing. Why would they do that when they require every other project across the Commonwealth to do as much as it relates to affordable housing? The town has no chance, in my opinion, based on many years of experience of getting DHCD to waive that concession. Third, you have to be under safe harbor at the time we file for our comprehensive permit, which I think the board would acknowledge, perhaps not, is not. I mean, the DHCD has not accepted that application, nor do I think they will. And I don't think, and, 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 but even if they were to entertain it, they would have to backdate it to when we submitted our comprehensive permit application. So I, I would have you ask your consultant, and maybe he's not comfortable answering tonight, but it seems to me, based on all the factors, that for the zoning board to declare safe harbor, you know, and waste 60 days of, of town money, spending it on your town council on a, on a application or a plea that you have, by my estimation, and I think other people that know this process, no chance to win. It just doesn't seem like a, a good use of everybody's time or the town's money. But obviously, that's your decision, and you guys can discuss it tonight. But I've been through many processes and lots of safe harbors. And oh, by the way, safe harbor, under this kind of initiative, what you're talking about, just in general. Keep in mind, you've, you've submitted a letter to DHCD relative to this issue, and should you declare a safe harbor, they're the adjudicating board. And they'll say, wait a sec, we already got your letter and said no, and now you're for us saying you're under safe harbor. It just seems inconsistent. So respectfully, those are my thoughts on the issue. I just thought it was important to recognize, because some of the things, particularly as it relates to staying the 180 days and needing to be under safe harbor at the time of our submittal, I think those are important things to recognize. So I, I would ask, you know, maybe your zoning, you're, you're either Town Council, Mr. Silverstein, who's quite capable and knowledgeable, and/or Mr. Glenn may have some thoughts on that as well.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Jonathan Silverstein, Town Council?
Hi, thank you.
So Mr. Engler raised a few issues there. I guess one thing I want to mention is, as your consultant just mentioned, if a safe harbor isn't declared within 15 days of opening the public hearing, it's deemed waived. That's in the DHCD regulations. So if you were to wait for a decision from DHCD regarding, or a response regarding the select board's letter, and that response were to come outside that 15-day period, you could not then invoke the safe harbor. So I just wanted to make that one point. Just a couple other things. Under the regulations, I'll quote one provision. If the department determines the municipality is in compliance with its HPP, the certification shall be deemed effective on the date upon which the municipality achieved its numerical target for the calendar year in question. So were DHCD ultimately to determine that the restriction of those units, the addition of those units as deed-restricted units within the town, or to count as progress towards your HPP, my reading of that regulation is that it would be effective on the date that that deed restriction took effect. And then the third thing I just want to clarify is that, in fact, the regulations specifically state that, quote, "This procedure shall toll the requirement to terminate the year within 180 days." So it's not for me to say whether or not the board should or should not invoke the safe harbor, but I did want to clarify those procedural issues.
Thank you, Mr. Silverstein. Mr. Glenn?
Thanks. Just to comment as well, and I, and I should preface this with my favorite expression in the world, which is, I'm not a lawyer. You have a good lawyer, so you need to trust him on legal matters. But I did just want to make it clear that it doesn't need to be 60 days. Remember, the 60 days you computed as you have 15 days to request this. The developer has up to 15 days to respond, but they could respond immediately and cut off, I think, two weeks right there. And DHCD may just, may respond earlier. So it may be under 60 days. The second thing is, there's nothing to say you can't actually do some good work during those 60 days. So I would hope, even if you did pursue this route, you could, rather than sit on your hands, you know, the town officials who have the plans could still be reviewing them. You can, you can be laying the groundwork that might save you some time in the backend anyways. So that's just another thing. And then, I guess lastly, I would say, like Town Council, I'm not here to advise you one route or another. I think I would just sort of put it out there and hope that everybody could approach this. If you do go this route, it's in the spirit of, you have 155 residents in the room. That implies a fair amount of concern over this project. I think what I would, what I would encourage is to just think, in order for this to be a smooth process, you want to make sure everybody feels comfortable with how you're, how you're moving. If that means you do this, make it clear that this is not necessarily make it go away. This is pursuing an option. And also make it clear to the applicant that you felt the need to pursue all options, but if it comes right back, you are willing, just as you started the meeting, to work through this, this process. You know, that using an option available to you does not imply that you're dragging your feet or, you know, sticking your head in the sand. So that's all I would, I would say.
Thank you. Brian, were you finished?
Well, just based on everything we've heard, I would certainly suggest that whatever we decide, we run concurrently. We don't want to waste time. I think that, from what I heard, the operative term is making progress, and I think that Powderhouse Lane is, it shows good faith progress. And I don't think that we lose anything. Despite what the applicant feels, it's our time, it's our money, and I think that we, it's necessary for us to address all the issues and make, avail ourselves to all the options we have, at the same time continuing the process as if the, it will be denied or that we never filed to begin with. That's my feelings.
John Baneris?
Yeah, I just think it's important to explore that option and to continue progress on that end. I'd also like to point out that Powderhouse is now owned by, you know, nonprofit affordable housing developer that has a strong presence in the North Shore. And 60% AMI units, you know, to me, that's, that's more affordable than 80% AMI. So I think we should explore that option.
Thank you, John. James?
This is a little nettlesome, certainly, in light of what Jeff Angler said about our chances of getting a favorable decision for safe harbor and his remarks about losing time. I would opt for, if we can do things concurrently and not lose any progress on our timeline, it probably does make sense to at least explore this option for safe harbor. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Jim Dieter?
I think it would be in the sense of being very transparent and open to whatever other opinions are out there concerning this entire project that we exercise every available step that is open to us, regardless of whether other people feel we are wasting our time or wasting the town's money. I think we should continue on with the process at the same time we adopt this step so that it moves forward. But we would be not doing, we would not be fiscally responsible if we ignored any possibility now, when we can. If we don't make this decision now, we cannot make it after 15 days, I believe, from now. So we should take it and make it, and if it fails, so be it. But we also should continue to proceed along with the application and do the very best we can to hear that through, and that's my view.
Thank you, Jim. Sean Zhang?
Yeah, I agree with Jim. I, we do need to explore all our avenues here and continue, keep, keep, keep moving forward as if it doesn't happen.
Catherine, what are your thoughts? I know you had questions at the beginning.
I did have questions. I think, you know, I, I'm always in favor of exploring all the options. I think that it makes sense to pursue an argument for safe harbor, but I don't think it makes sense to rely upon that. So I think that although we may submit this application, I think we have a lot of other due diligence to do and work to be doing, and possibly peer reviews to get started, et cetera, et cetera, to make sure that, you know, if we get denied on safe harbor, we still have the information we need to evaluate this project and guide it forward the best we can for the town.
So are we ready to move to a vote, we think?
Yes.
It will be a roll call vote, and everyone will be voting except for Sean and Jim Dieter, because the others are the full-time members. James?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. So we will move forward with the safe harbor, but keep moving on the project to not lose time. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which would be a presentation by the applicant. Are you still willing to do that presentation tonight, Mr. Engler?
I suppose we are, and show of good faith. I mean, obviously, we're disappointed with the board's decision. But you have every right to make that decision. I fully acknowledge that. So in the spirit of, you know, trying to make some progress, we'll present tonight, and we'll wait to see the submittal by the town to DHCD, and we'll respond accordingly. But we will present.
So I believe I've made you a co-host, which should allow you to share a screen. If not, we're in trouble. Great.
Can everybody see that?
Yes. Nothing's open yet. We're just seeing the list of.
You're not seeing the screen?
Yes, we see the screen. We can't, we see your list.
Not the presentation.
You don't see the presentation?
No.
You see a list of files?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't know why that is, because.
I believe you have to open the PowerPoint first.
I think that's correct, and then press.
It is open.
So someone in the audience just suggested unsharing and resharing the screen. I mean, I guess that's like turning something on and off. You might want to try it. I don't know.
At least from what I understand, typically, you need to open the file and then hit Share Screen. Not Share Screen before File. I'm not sure if that's what Mr. Angler did or not.
I will. Apologies, the control I had at the beginning, or at the bottom of the screen with the screen share, is no longer visible. Could you, whoever provided access, could you undo that?
Okay, so I undid it and made you co-host again.
I don't, well, I don't want you to make me co-host.
Oh, you don't?
No.
That's the only way you can share your screen, I believe.
I don't believe so.
Okay, you're no longer co-host.
Hey, Jeff, it's Leslie. Do you want me to try and share my screen and see if that works without being co-host?
Sure.
Host disabled participant screen sharing. That's what I'm getting.
So you can't share it either?
No.
Sarah, you need to allow them to share screen. Just don't make them a co-host. Just, just allow sharing the screen.
Yeah.
Is that it? Do I, do I click on them, Greg, or I think?
You just click on the people you want to allow to share the screen. So you should have that option for each person.
Yeah, when.
Sarah, it's located under Security.
Yeah, when Madam Chairman started it, my, when, before she shared anything, I had the Share Screen option at the bottom of my browser, which is customary. And then it, it went away, and it has not returned. So something is going on, I think, at the, on the host side. Admittedly, I'm not, I'm not an expert at this, but I've done enough screen shares to to.
Jeff, have you maximized your screen and then unmaximized it? Does that do anything?
No. Can people see that?
You got it, Jeff.
Yay. Sorry about that.
Sorry, I appreciate that.
Click Full Screen.
I think we, do we toll those seven minutes on 180 days or not?
Yeah, I think we did. We'll grant the extension. Trust me. You know, back in my previous days at Deloitte Consulting, you'll never forget the feeling of, you know, being up front in front of a room of 250 people, and you can't get the presentation to start. So I was having some flashbacks there for a second, but anyway, I digress. So I'm glad we were able to fix that. I've obviously spoken already, but for the record, my name's Jeff Angler, and I'm the Managing Director of SLV School Street, who is the applicant entity for this comprehensive permit application. It is our sincere pleasure to introduce this development to you tonight. As many of you are aware, we've been working in some capacity with the town on. with the town on this opportunity for almost eighteen months. We worked in earnest with the Manchester Board of Selectmen for almost ten months on a nearly identical project and had a draft development agreement just about ready for execution when the negotiation ended. I've been in the multifamily development and consulting business for about seventeen years. And as a developer.
Elaine Quinn, would you please mute yourself? Thank you.
Are we good? All right. So I've been involved in the permitting and development of many thousands of units of mixed income multifamily housing across the Commonwealth, including developments in Winchester, Newton, Brookline, Hingham, Weston, just to name a few. We currently have over a hundred million dollars in projects and developments currently under construction. And we have a multi-billion dollar fund committed as our investor on this project. We're particularly enthusiastic about this development, as I believe it has several characteristics of a great project. Most notably, it's not close to any residential abutters. In fact, we don't have a single residential abutter. We've included a couple images here to show the red dotted outline obviously shows the boundaries of our site, which is about twenty-three acres. We bought one twenty-eight. Obviously, our access is off School Street. But as you can see, there's a, quite a bit of conservation area around us, but not a lot of people and certainly not a lot of houses. This image shows and it, it's, this is an actual aerial photograph, which shows the boundaries of our site. And we've superimposed our site plan within the, within the context of the site. So as you can see, most of the site is going to remain untouched. I'd say approximately five acres of the twenty-three are going to be used as part of the, of part of the proposal. So as you can see, you know, close to one twenty-eight, close to the on-ramp, not far from the athletic club, but really not too close to, to, to anything else. So the town has gone to a from, in my opinion, great lengths as part of its master plan and planned production plan to identify housing needs. We believe our hundred and thirty-six unit rental housing proposal checks many of these boxes. Moreover, as someone that I think indicated earlier, approval of this project will allow town to achieve its ten percent safe harbor status and control all forty B developments for the foreseeable future. So we've prepared a presentation tonight to hit upon the highlights of the plan. And while we're not going to hear from all our technical experts tonight, our, our objective is really to introduce most of the key concepts and considerations. We anticipate there'll be questions throughout the process and will endeavor to be responsive. So as this slide shows, we have quite a team, a lot of professionals that have been involved with this development since its outset. We've done a lot of work already. In fact, I'm take it for, for what it is, having done a lot of projects, but I can say legitimately that the amount of work that we've done prior to the first hearing with the zoning board is equal or greater to any forty B project I've been involved with. So with that said, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Carlton Quinn from Allen and Major, our civil engineer, to walk through the site and civil engineering components. And then we're going to hear from Scott Goddard tonight, who's our environmental consultant, Jeff Dirk from Van Assen Associates will talk traffic. Dan Riggs from Embark will talk architecture. Leslie will, will be talking and forgive me, Leslie, I don't see you, oh, there you are. From Bowler on our, as our landscape architect, and I'll have a few concluding comments before we, we turn it back over to the board. So with that said, Carlton, I'm going to stop sharing, and if you could share your screen, that would be great.
Good evening. I just want to check that everyone can hear me and see my screen share.
Yes.
Yes.
As Jeff mentioned, my name's Carlton Quinn with Allen and Major Associates. We are the civil engineers and surveyors on the project. I'm basically just going to give you a quick summary of the plans. I expect to go into these in much greater detail in the Sorry.
Maximize your screen, please.
I, I can't do that. This isn't PowerPoint, unfortunately. If I maximize it, I lose my page flipping. So I apologize for that. So I'm just going to kind of go through a page by page, page turner with my plans and just note some items on the plans. This is kind of the full locus of the plan. You can see here, the site is bounded on School Street. An old right-of-way called Old School Street and one twenty-eight just to the south. The plans are blown up because the site is so big and it basically just kind of focuses on the north and then we don't see the south of the, the site in, in most of my plans because there's just not much going on there. So the site is located on School Street. It's also known as Shingle Hill locally, and it's just north of Run twenty-eight. And it's right across the street from Utopia Farms, which is located right about here. This is our existing condition plan. This is just the north side. The site is twenty-three point three-two acres woodlands. And it's generally comprised of two areas, the north side, which is one large hill, and then the south side, which is another large hill. And the two hills are basically bisected almost in the middle of the site with a bordering vegetated wetlands. And then there's some other offsite wetlands to the north here, and these wetlands are associated with Sawmill Brook, which runs kind of around the site to the north. This is the south side of the site. You can see that, that's the BVW that kind of runs in between them. There isn't also an isolated land subject to flooding in the south westerly corner on, on the south side. This is pretty far away from our development and shouldn't really come into play. Properties located in limited, limited commercial district and also in the Water Resource Overlay District Zone Three. This site plan here, it illustrates the, the site layout materials. The proposed hundred and thirty-two unit building is approximately ninety-four thousand square feet. And the vehicular access is provided off of School Street, which you can see here, and it kind of winds around the building up here up to a cul-de-sac turnaround, and you would egress the site in the same way. The limited work for this, the, the site itself is about eight acres, but with all the, the site work, it approximately eight acres. And she'll leave approximately fifteen acres of undisturbed land when the project is finished. One unique facet of the site is the elevation of the building. I kind of put in kind of a general description here of what it is. The driveway rises from an elevation of fifty here. It goes about thirteen hundred linear feet to this point here, where it reaches approximately the first floor elevation where the residents would live. That's about an average grade of five point three percent of slope. The, the state billing code of the state fire code allows for up to ten percent. So the average grade here is about half of what's allowed for the state billing code. There are some flatter parts, some steeper parts. I think it goes down about two percent, maybe up to eight percent, and that is done in an effort to try to minimize the disturbance around the driveway. The proposed vehicular access meets all NFPA one and state fire code requirements regarding width, length, slope, turning radius, movements, and radii. The development team has met with the Fire Department on two occasions, discussed the site. And as far as we understand, there's no major outstanding issues with, or concerns with the site at this time, other than finalizing the location of the hydrants and some other minor site details. While we have it up, I know there's a list of waivers in front of you. I just wanted to quickly go through our, our land usage table, and this kind of just summarizes all the dimensional requirements of the site. And in general, we really don't need many dimensional waivers. We do need one for rear yard and side yard. We are providing eighty-four, eighty-four feet for both of those, and a hundred is acquired. So we're looking for a waiver about sixteen feet for our side yards. You can see here, we're required, the, the lots are going to be five acres. We've twenty-three. There's no requirement for frontage, but we have four hundred and ninety-five. There's a five hundred foot minimum lot width. That's an existing non-conforming for the property at two hundred and ninety-one. There's not really anything we can do about that. Building coverage for the site is nine point seven. We're required, required up to twenty percent. Parking, half a percent. We're allowed up to twenty-five percent. Minimum landscape coverage, eighty-three and a half percent. The minimum required is twenty-five, well over that. The minimum impervious area, sixteen and a half percent. Fifteen percent is required for the Water Resource District, but that's actually, it's it's stated in there that if you're providing recharge, you're allowed to go over fifteen percent. So whether we actually need a waiver for that, I don't believe we actually do. We have plenty of front yard, two hundred and seventy feet, more fifties required. As I noted, a hundred feet is required for side and rear. We have eighty-four feet for both of those. Maximum building height. This is interesting. We're actually ten feet below the maximum building height. But we do need a waiver because we're half a story higher than the requirement. So even though we do need a building height requirement, but it's only half a percent, and the actual building height and footage is ten feet lower than the maximum. Minimum parking area into your landscape, five percent. We have six point four percent just over that. There's a parking table up here. I'm going to leave that to the traffic consultant to discuss. The next slide. This is our grading and drainage plan. Obviously, the site has some topography challenges. We're mitigating most of those changes in elevation with retaining walls and some landscape slopes. Stormwater will meet all mass DEP and Manchester by the Sea standards. No waivers are being required for the standards of stormwater. I think we are asking for a waiver for a stormwater special permit, but just administratively, we are going to be meeting any of the requirements for the local stormwater. One interesting part of this project is ninety-three point two percent of the parking stalls in this project are going to be located below the building. So this is going to replace a standard parking lot where stormwater runoff will be much cleaner from the roof than it would be for a, a two hundred stall parking lot. It's going to reduce the amount of salts, antifreeze, oil, grease, and heavy metals that will be associated with a vehicular parking lot from being distracted in the stormwater system. And above that, just going to be basically clean roof water that will be going to the stormwater. So you'll have a much better water quality discharge off the site than you would any other typical multifamily site with surface parking. This is our utilities plan. The site is going to be served by like private electrical, gas, and data service. The municipal water line service, there's none located in this part of School Street, so we will be proposing to extend the water main about thirty-seven hundred linear feet. I believe it's down near the golf course, and we'll need to bring it up to our site to get connected to the municipal water system. But for a sewer, the project's going to construct an onsite wastewater disposal facility to serve the project. This, we have done witness test pits from the DEP to confirm there is capacity to service this project, but the ultimate permitting of the wastewater treatment plant will be done at the state level and is apparently proposed to be done later on in the process. Here is southerly side. There's, there's a possible each field going to be put in here in connection with the wastewater treatment plants. And here, the lighting plan will be dark sky compliant lighting. And we've shown a photo metrics here that we have very minimal spillage of light into anything other than the roads, parking lot, and building. And this is a snow storage plan, showing all the landscape areas on the site that we'd be able to provide snow storage. And this one is what you'd call a basically a fire truck swept path analysis, showing that the largest municipal truck in the area can maneuver through the site without running into any curbs or other infrastructure. So just showing that there's plenty of turning radii for the existing trucks that are in and servicing the Manchester area. And we did coordinate this with the Fire Department. That's the end of my presentation. I'm going to hand over to Scott Goddard. I'm actually going to control the screen for Scott. He only needs two pages. So if Scott wants to just unmute himself, I can turn the pages for him here.
Thank you, Carlton. This is Scott Goddard. I'm a professional wetland scientist and owner of Goddard Consulting. I've been a professional consultant for over twenty-five years and have been involved in many projects of this nature. So my firm was the consultant who established the initial extent of the wetland resource areas located on this property and will be involved in the additional permitting that will be before the Conservation Commission in the near future. So what happened here was we reconed the entire property. We delineated, as Carlton pointed out, the surrounding bordering vegetated wetlands. On this plan, you can see those dotted data points connected with the lines. Yeah, right down, right down there, and actually all, all sides across School Street, know by Old School Street. There's some additional wetlands on the other sheet as well. Those become less pertinent. So there's, there's four series of bordering vegetated wetlands. Those are areas that are kind of swampy, low-lying areas that have wetland vegetation and hydrology features that are protected by the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. And in addition, we have the Sawmill Brook, which is a perennial stream, meaning that it flows on a year-round basis. The Brook has a two hundred foot zone, riparian zone adjacent to it, that's has a higher level of scrutiny and protection under the Mass Wetland Protection Act. That's called the riverfront area. And then zones within a hundred feet of wetlands are referred to as buffer zones. Any proposed work within buffer zones does require a permit from the Conservation Commission. We file a permit called a Notice of Intent and they issue a permit called an Order of Conditions. During the initial review of the Conservation Commission, not for the project, but for the existing conditions establishment, we filed in it what's called an abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation, or an ANRAD for short. The purpose of the ANRAD is to establish baseline conditions throughout the property to make sure that all wetlands are properly marked in the field. Goes through rigorous peer review, and this did go through rigorous peer review from a third-party independent peer reviewer, DeRosa Environmental Consultants. During that public hearing process, we reviewed the site conditions with the peer reviewer. We worked with the Conservation Commission to make modifications as they saw fit. And then we sought the affirmation through the issuance of an ORAD, or an Order of Resource Area Delineation. That's in effect and was issued this past spring. So for three years, all the resource areas are bounded on the site and monumented by what you see on the site plan in front of you. This is the plan that was referenced, in fact, in the, in the Order of Resource Area Delineation. During that peer review process, we went through a very thorough review of issues such as the presence of unique habitat features on the site, such as vernal pools. In particular, vernal pools, I should say. Three vernal pool areas, which are not resource areas per se under the Wetland Protection Act, but are noted as more unique habitat features were identified on site. That gray area to the bottom of your screen, in the center, inside the wetland was one of the, is the nearest vernal pool to the proposed site activity. Those offer unique breeding habitats for salamanders and other amphibians. So all that to say is this project will be subject to a notice of intent. It has not been filed yet. Conservation Commission will be reviewing our proposed impacts to any wetlands. We're not proposing any direct alterations to wetlands throughout the site. There will be some small encroachments to buffer zone and riverfront area. But quite a bit of effort has gone into the planning and citation and sizing of this property to minimize the intrusion into wetlands. You can see we also have a lot of slopes we're dealing with as well. So that supports the idea of minimizing encroachment into the buffer zones. So I'm expecting a, a thoughtful but a reasonably reasonable review with the Conservation Commission on those matters. It's also worth noting, as I close out these comments, that the site is not subject to any rare or endangered species review. The, there's been a recent map change from the State of Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. from the State of Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. So both in their two thousand seventeen maps and in their most recent maps updated last month, there's no reported known or suspected sightings of rare or endangered species on the site so that we will not be subject to any review uh, by the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program in Massachusetts. So that's in for an initial presentation from an environmental perspective. I'll, I'll be standing by in the balance of this presentation and surely subsequent ones to get into these things in more detail before the conservation commission as well and ask questions arise. With that, I'll turn it over to the traffic consultant. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessa and Associates and with the transportation consultants for the project. Um, if you could allow me to share my screen, I'll pull up my presentation. All right. Can everyone see that presentation?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. So I'm going to look through a summary of the transportation analysis that was prepared for the project. Um, at the outset, I'd want to mention uh, that the, the board, the select board uh, did undertake a peer review of our transportation assessment. Um, I fully expect that the zoning board will um, undertake a similar review. Uh, but the findings I'm going to present tonight uh, incorporate the comments that were provided by the uh, select board's peer review consultant as well as they've uh, gone through and uh, looking at the methodology that was used in the assessment. I, I think importantly, as we uh, continue with the presentation tonight is really to make sure that the methodology that was used is consistent with industry standards. It's consistent with mass DOT standards. Um, and at least from the standpoint of what the select board was looking for, uh, the areas that we covered in the assessment uh, was consistent with what was uh, in their minds, areas that they wanted to see focused on uh, with respect to the impacts of this project on the transportation infrastructure. Uh, so first off, the study was prepared in accordance with mass DOT guidelines. Mass DOT sets a series of criteria that we must follow in preparing these assessments. And those criteria really ensure that as you look at other transportation studies that are completed in the community, they should all be consistent. So the data I presented to you and the approach that I use to assessing this data should be consistent between all of those studies. Um, that really allows this board and other time boards to look at cumulative impacts of projects. The project is, we've assessed it was based on a hundred and fifty-seven uh, units at the project site. We know that that's been reduced to a hundred and thirty-six per the application that's currently before you. That does result in a slight reduction in traffic volumes. Um, slight being somewhere on the order of five to fifteen vehicle trips during the peak hours. So just to quantify that, um, that's really the change from what you see in our transportation assessment. So our assessment was based on higher traffic volumes, uh, because it was based on a hundred and fifty-seven units. Uh, the reduction would produce that small decrease in traffic, but from the standpoint of looking at the impacts, it really wouldn't change that much from what we've evaluated. Then again, that the peer reviewer considered. Because it is a transportation assessment, we're not just looking at motor vehicles. Uh, we're also looking at pedestrians and bicycles and public transportation services in the area. So even though some of those are not available to our project site, we identify that, we look at that and we look at opportunities to be able to connect to or expand upon available infrastructure in the area. So it's a, it's a comprehensive look of everything that's available to the project site and how this project will interact with those accommodations. Uh, very important as we look at transportation studies that are conducted uh, during the COVID pandemic. Uh, we all know the traffic volumes, they're starting to get back to a level that might be close to pre-COVID, but we're not quite there yet. And that, there's a number of reasons for that that I won't go into, but I think what's important is you look at any transportation assessment that's conducted now. Uh, there are adjustments that need to be applied to those traffic points. The way those adjustments are determined is based on criteria the Department of Transportation has established and they establish this very early on in the COVID pandemic. Uh, one of the things that they did uh, comprehensively is they started making available publicly available data uh, for traffic counts throughout the Commonwealth and making them available in real time. So that you can actually go online to Mast D O T's website and you can look at traffic volumes throughout the Commonwealth uh, almost a day uh, behind essentially. Um, and the reason for that was so that we could be able to, as transportation professionals, look at what has happened to traffic volumes uh, pre-COVID up until now. And then what that allows us to do is we can look at traffic counts prior to COVID pandemic in, in Manchester by the Sea. Compare those to the traffic volumes that we collected and come up with an adjustment factor. And that's what we've done in this case. And again, the peer review consultant has uh, taken a look at those uh, adjustments and has confirmed that they're appropriate and they comply with industry standards for traffic studies conducted during the pandemic. The overall conclusion of the traffic study, uh, and when we talk about the traffic volumes associated with the project, you'll see we're producing somewhere of about fifty trips during the peak hours. So that's fifty vehicles over a one-hour time period. And obviously they come out of the project, they go left or right, some get onto Route one twenty-eight going in either direction, some continue uh, to downtown area, to the waterfront area uh, in Manchester by the Sea. So as those volumes get away from the site, they start to get smaller and smaller. Uh, and for that reason, the conclusion that we reached as well as the peer review consultant, when they looked at that was the project would not have a significant impact over conditions without the project. Now, the real caveat to that is that doesn't mean that the conditions that are out there are perfect. In fact, we've identified that the off-ramps from Route one twenty-eight as they're approaching school street are operating um, at their design capacity. And that results in residual queuing along the ramps themselves. And that's apparent to anyone who understands uh, the operations that interchange area. Um, so what we show is that in terms of how much additional backup would happen in terms of the cars getting off the ramp and in particular the left-term movements. Uh, they'd increase that queuing would increase by about one to four vehicles over what you experience out there today. So if you're, if you're um, familiar with those backups that happen, that's what you would see as a result of the construction of the project. If there's four vehicles in front of you, we're going to add another vehicle to the back of the four, so that becomes five. Um, so that, that's order of magnitude what we're talking about in terms of the increases from a project. Um, importantly, as you're looking at a comprehensive permit project and, and in any project um, is safety. So the two things that we're looking at with respect to safety is motor vehicle crash history is they exist along school street as well as at the intersections that we evaluated. So that's the first thing we look at. And then the last thing is site distances at the driveway to make sure that the driveway is properly positioned and designed uh, so that there's proper sightlines for people exiting the site as well as if you're just driving along school street. Um, and a vehicle pulls out of the driveway and for some reason it stalls in the middle of the road, can you see that vehicle in enough time to be able to stop? So that's what we evaluate to the safety um, at the driveway. So first, looking at the crashes, there's no high crash locations along this section of school street and none of the intersections that we evaluated exceed the state's average crashes. Uh, so there's no, no, nothing with respect to our crash history or exceedances of state criteria that indicate that there's safety deficiencies relative to the designer operation of school street and the intersections that we evaluated. And then the sightlines that are driveway, um, those, I'm sure you're very familiar with that section of school street relatively flat and level. So our sightlines are almost double what's required for uh, vehicles that are traveling ten miles an hour over the posted speed limit. You know, explain that criteria in a minute. So this slide just shows the context of the project site in relation to not only school street here, which you can see running through the center of the slide, but also the one twenty-eight interchange in this area here. And the site is obviously shown in yellow on this slide. This slide shows the study area that we evaluated. And the other things I want to point out that's shown on here um, is that orange dash line. So the orange dashed line, uh, as I mentioned, from a transportation perspective, we look at pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. The orange line is where there is an existing sidewalk. So you can see there is an existing sidewalk along the east side of school street and ends right at the Route one twenty-eight um, westbound off-ramp um, in this area here. So it does not continue up into the project site. And there was not a sidewalk on the east side. So um, in terms of pedestrian infrastructure, that, that's what's out there. Uh, the numbers you see on the slide are the, the width of the travel lanes at each of the intersections. Um, travel lanes are at least twelve feet. Um, Mill Street there, it's a ten-foot travel lane, but the majority of the roadways uh, have travel lanes that exceed twelve feet, which is an ideal dimension for a, a traveling. In terms of the data that we had collected along the roadway, uh, we measured two types of traffic volumes. We measured twenty-four hour traffic volume. So that's the daily traffic volume on school street. And we also look at turning movement counts at the intersection. So at each of the intersections that we studied and we've shown them on the slide here, it's at Water Street as well as the two ramp intersections with Route one twenty-eight. Uh, we also look at the volume of traffic during the commuter peak hours. So that's a one-hour period in the morning when people are uh, primarily going to work. And we also look at a period in the evening when people are coming home from work. And that peak hour generally occurs between seven and nine in the morning and then between four and six in the evening. Uh, we use that daily traffic count on school street to be able to make sure that we in fact capture the peak hours on the roadway. So the peak hours in this area are generally between seven-thirty and eight-thirty in the morning. And then the evening, it's generally between uh, four-thirty and five-thirty or, or five to six, depending on which intersection in particular that you're looking at. So school street over a twenty-four hour basis, it accommodates about seven thousand three hundred vehicles per day. Um, I'm going to mention that number again in a few minutes because when you want to uh, understand what is the traffic volume increase that the project represents. Um, keep that seven thousand three hundred number in, in your mind because we're going to talk about how much traffic this project's going to produce during that same daily time period on the roadway. So seven thousand three hundred is a two-way twenty-four hour volume on school street. So total volume of traffic over twenty-four hours traveling in both directions on the roadway. When we measure those traffic volumes over a twenty-four hour basis, the other thing we measure is the speed of traffic. Um, and that's very important as we look at the site distances at the driveway. Uh, because you, we want to make sure that you have proper sightlines, not for the posted speed limit, but for the speed that people are actually driving on the roadway, which um, as you might imagine is, is above the posted speed limit in in almost most instances. Uh, so this area of school street where the site is located has a posted speed limit of thirty miles, thirty-five miles an hour. We measured the speed of traffic over two days on school street. So it's be seven thousand three hundred vehicles each day. So it's over fourteen thousand vehicles that we measured the speed of over two days. The majority of those vehicles were traveling at forty-five miles an hour or below. So it's about ten miles an hour over the posted speed limit in, in this area. Uh, and so all of our safety criteria are not based on the posted speed limit. They're based on someone driving forty-five miles an hour on that roadway because absent intervention, that's the speed the traffic is traveling along that roadway itself. As I mentioned, transportation assessment. So we talked about pedestrian accommodations in the area. Uh, there were no formal bicycle accommodations, although the roadway width itself, the combination of the travel lane and the shoulder uh, does meet mass DOT criteria for a shared, shared traveled way. So essentially there's enough room for a bicyclist and a motor vehicle to share the traveled way without the vehicle needing to cross the center line to pass a bicyclist. So although there are not striped bike lanes, uh, portions at least of school street do meet the criteria established by mass DOT for a shared traveled way uh, condition. There are no public transportation services in this area. Uh, Manchester by the Sea is served by the MBTA by way of commuter rail, but there are no uh, public transportation services by way of bus services that extend out into this area. So it's not not an option at this time for us to be able to connect to public transportation, other than uh, someone needing to get in through their vehicle and drive to the commuter rail station to connect, catch the commuter rail. So that's essentially the existing conditions that we had measured in the area. I also spoke about motor vehicle crash data. So we looked at mass DOT high crash location mapping, which again is publicly available. Uh, so you can look that up online. There's no high crash locations in this area. I don't believe there are any in the town of Manchester by the Sea. And the other thing that we look at is the number of crashes that are happening at each of these intersections. And then we compare a crash rate. So that's the number of crashes that occur in an intersection per million vehicles traveling through the intersection. Mast DOT publishes crash rate data so that we can look at that data and compare the calculated crash rate to Mast DOT's data. And if we find it exceeds that data for this area of the state, uh, then we would do a little deeper dive in terms of what might be causing those crashes. None of the intersections in this area had a crash rate that exceeded the state average. They were all below the state average. So no high crash locations on the state's database. And all of the intersections uh, did not have a number of crashes uh, that raised to a significant level that would exceed any of the state mandated criteria. So in terms of looking at the impacts of the project, we do compare impacts, looking at a future planning horizon. That future planning horizon is established by the state is seven years in the future. So that's seven-year planning horizon. Um, it allows essentially what the board has been discussing tonight, which is we need to approve a project to the extent that we do that, then the applicant needs to apply for permits, get building permits, build the project. Um, and then have some time to actually put the traffic on the roadway and see what the impacts would be. So that's seven-year planning horizon. Allows for two years of permitting and construction before the project gets open. And then another five years beyond that uh, to be able to make sure that there's some life to any infrastructure improvements that are provided in the area. So the seven-year planning horizon, we work with your planning department to establish um, what additional projects the town has approved that are not yet built, that need to be included in our future numbers. And then just general growth in the area. So if the town approved no other projects, traffic volumes would generally increase just by virtue of um, additional automobiles in a household. So if you have someone that's not driving age now, but in seven years, they'll get the driver's license that may add another driver to the road. Those type of influences are included in general growth. So that's independent of any projects. So at the time we conducted the traffic study, the, the planning department did not identify any projects in this area that would increase traffic beyond the general growth rate. So there might be small projects here or there, uh, but none of them would generate more traffic than the growth rate. The growth rate historically in the town, looking at over the past ten years for traffic volumes, traffic volumes have generally increased by less than one percent, about point six percent per year, and that's compounded annually. Uh, the growth rate used in our assessment was one percent. So it's slightly higher than what's been experienced historically within the town again over that ten-year time period. So future conditions without the project are projects and that one percent growth rate. And again, the town did not identify any projects for us to include. So the next thing is estimating the traffic from the project. And this is where I want you to go back to that seven thousand three hundred vehicles per day. So what this slide here shows is the amount of traffic that we expect the project is going to produce uh, both on a daily basis over twenty-four hours. And then during each of those peak hours in the morning and in the evening. So if you look at the chart here and we'll focus on the far right-hand where it says total. So the top row is the average weekday traffic. So this is the two-way traffic entering and exiting that we expect the project will produce over twenty-four hours. So we expect that the project will add six hundred and two vehicles to the seven thousand three hundred vehicles that are already on school or on school street itself. So that's about an eight percent increase in, in traffic in terms of what that represents. And just to put that in context, measuring traffic volumes Monday to through Friday, the traffic volumes fluctuate about ten percent. So if I measured my traffic volumes on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I plotted a graph, which you see is the variation in traffic volumes on a daily basis, they increase or decrease by ten percent over the course of the entire week. Mondays are low-volume days, Thursdays are high-volume days. What Tuesdays and Wednesdays are generally condi- uh, considered average. Uh, Friday might be a little bit above average, but if you look at that variation, it's about a ten percent variation over any day of the week. And we're below that variation. And that's one of the reasons why when we look at the impact of the project, i- it's not significant because it's within that typical variation of traffic volumes you have uh, Monday through Friday. The next two volumes, the forty-eight and the fifty-three. The forty-eight is the traffic volume the project would produce during the morning peak hour. So between seven-thirty and eight-thirty in the morning, this is the forty-eight is the number of vehicles we expected you to have entering and exiting the project site. And then in the evening, between four-thirty and five-thirty, the highest traffic volume hour, the project will produce about fifty-three vehicle trips. Again, that's two-way volumes, thirty-two entering, twenty-one exiting in terms of the, the evening peak hour. There's often a lot of questions about, well, what about the rest of the traffic to get you to six hundred and two? And how do you, how do you actually get to that number? Those lower numbers, that's one peak hour. So it's the, it's the highest traffic volume hour that will occur in the morning is forty-eight. And the highest traffic volume hour in the evening uh, is fifty-three. On either side of that peak hour, i- it doesn't mean that it drops off to zero. What it means is it's less than forty-eight. It could be forty-six, it could be forty-seven, it's just less than forty-eight. Um, so there is more traffic that's produced if you look at a longer time period that gets us to the six hundred and two. But the forty-eight and the fifty-three is the absolute peak that happens. And that's what we want to analyze because adding forty-eight on top of the peak of the roadway produces a peak design condition from which we want to assess the impact of the project. It's essentially a peak on top of a peak. And that's the worst-case condition. And we want to make sure that there's enough capacity in the transportation infrastructure to accommodate uh, that level of volume increase. So once we've understood the volume of traffic the project is going to produce, we need to assign it onto the roadway and through those in the intersections that we studied. Um, and this slide shows that distribution of traffic. The way we come up with this distribution is we look at US census data uh, for residents of um, the town of Manchester by the Sea. So when you report your information to the US Census, uh, you not only report where you were, where you live, but you also report where you work. So that data is available to us so that we can see if you're a resident of the town of Manchester by the Sea, where do you go to work? And then we And then we can look at the traffic counts that we performed at the intersections to see how do you get from this area of the town to each of those employment centers. And that's what this, that's what this chart here shows. It shows using the census data how the project's traffic will use the roadway infrastructure uh that's available. So what you see here is about four percent of the traffic is oriented to the north on School Street. The balance ninety-six percent is oriented to and from the south. The majority of that sixty-three percent is oriented in one direction or the other on Route one twenty-eight. So that's where the majority of the traffic from this project is going to be focused. It's really south of the project with the balance, with the majority of that traffic getting on to Route one twenty-eight um to get to an employment center um in the area. So we've taken the traffic volumes from the table here, assigned them onto the roadway network based on this distribution that you see here. So the important thing, what I wanted to point out on this is when you look at those numbers forty-eight and fifty-three, now we break them down into each of these percentages. So you can see that um iteration of the volume slowly getting smaller and smaller as you get away from the site. And it makes sense because people are turning off, getting on different worldways depending on where their ultimate destination is. So as you get further away from the site, the numbers get smaller and smaller. And again, that speaks to why as we look at impacts, they're relatively minor in terms of uh increases and delays in vehicle queuing. Uh so as I mentioned, if we look at how these intersections operate, the intersections operate um at very good levels of service. And the level of service is a uh part of intersection operations. Uh so just like a school report card, it's A through F with A being the best conditions, uh F being considered failing conditions, a D is considered passing, that's considered the limited acceptable traffic operations. So we want our intersections to generally be operating at a D or better. So all of the intersections within this area are a D or better. In fact, the majority of them are uh Bs or Cs in terms of uh motorist delay. So those gradations indicate that there is capacity on the roadway network. The areas, as I mentioned initially, where we did see that there were some constraints were the off-ramps from Route one twenty-eight and primarily the left-turn movements getting off either one of these ramps. Uh we did see that there were delays where the operating conditions or levels of service were um in the E or an F. The off-ramp, particularly in the evening time period, coming off of the eastbound direction of Route one twenty-eight and the left-turn movement to head north on School Street was an area where we did see that the most delay did occur. And there was queuing along that off-ramp. So as I mentioned, what we look at in terms of impacts, when we do have increased delay and queuing, is what is the increase in queuing? And what we had shown on the westbound ramps was the increase in queuing after the project was one vehicle. On the eastbound ramps, the increase of queuing was four vehicles, and that primarily happened during the evening time period when we would have the balance or the majority of our traffic uh coming home from the project site. So we focused on areas to, ways to improve the interchange area. We worked with your consultant to come up or with the select boards consultant to come up with some recommendations, and I'll go into those now. So we have a series of recommendations relating to the site access, and then we'll deal with some of the off-site intersections. So I won't go through each one of these uh because I know it is getting late, and Carlton did present a lot of these. The site plan itself is, has been designed to um incorporate each of these recommendations. So our driveway, it's a boulevard-type design, as Carlton had mentioned. Uh the travel lanes meet what we've recommended, which is fourteen-foot travel lanes on either side of a four-foot median. That then transitions to a twenty-four-point-wide roadway, so you see that on your, on your uh site plan set. Uh standard signs and pavement markings have all been incorporated. Um and then lastly, with respect to the design of the driveway, there are two things. We wanna make sure we've got proper sightlines. You need a sightline of three hundred sixty feet for a speed, an approach speed of forty-five miles an hour. Uh the sightlines of the driveway are over five hundred feet. In fact, they're over five hundred and fifty feet. So we're far in excess of what's needed for safe sightlines. But the key thing is to make sure there's nothing placed within the site triangle areas that would block site distances, so that's a recommendation. And then the last thing on the site access is to design an accommodation for left turners. So if you're heading northbound on School Street um and you don't have any interest in going into the project site, we wanna make sure that um a left-turning vehicle, as it might wait for a gap in traffic in uh for in southbound traffic, that you can still continue on northbound on School Street. So allowing for left turners to get over close to the center line so that you can pass on the right-hand side um is something that we've said that we would work with the town to implement um such an accommodation at the driveway. Now, looking offsite, uh we had worked with the select boards consultant to come up with a recommendation to develop some improvements. So basically, uh a study of the interchange area uh to develop a series of concept plans and alternatives to be able to improve uh the access to the uh to the interchange area. And I think importantly, to reduce uh delays and queuing on the off-ramps. Uh so that's a commitment that we would undertake as a part of the project. That study and the resulting recommendations uh do make the town eligible for be able, being able to apply for state funding for grant for improvements, uh given that these are under the control of MastDOT. So this is one of the ways to be able to uh leverage opportunities to make some improvements to the interchange system. And then lastly is a series of measures that we would undertake to encourage a use of alternative modes of transportation. Uh so this really gets at things that we can do onsite to at least let the residents know um what's available to them by way of public transportation. We do know that you need to uh either drive or maybe you can bicycle to some of those amenities. We wanna make sure they're avail, that they are aware of what's available to them. And that's really looking at trying to reduce just overall regional traffic volumes. Um from the standpoint of the design of the project, uh providing opportunities for residents to telecommute. So this is basically providing shared workspaces and such uh within the project so that people have an opportunity to get out of their apartment um and be able to interact with others um and do your Zoom calls or things like that um outside of your apartment. And then uh lastly, providing bicycle accommodations within the site. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'll stop sharing now and turn it over to the architect, Dan Riggs.
Thanks, Jeff. Just give me one moment and I can share my screen. Here. Just give me one second. Here we go. So good evening, everybody, um and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Daniel Riggs. I'm the architect on the project uh with Embark, and I'll be taking it through the architectural component of our presentation tonight. Just gonna start by kind of zooming back out and and looking at the general context uh of the site and and of our building here.
Yeah, we can't see.
Oh, you can't see it?
No.
Yeah, I'll just go to the uh, I was trying to go full screen here. Let me just go to the uh zoomed-out window.
There we go.
Can you see that now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Apologies for that. Uh so again, just zooming out and looking at the uh the larger context here again, as as Jeff had already explained um earlier today, so. Uh can you still see my screen?
Yeah.
Perfect. Uh so our site is located just uh north of Route one twenty-eight. And uh that, which occurs right here. Um School Street runs alongside our site right here. Um just to the northwest is the Cathedral Pines Conservation Area. And you can see the sawmill brook highlighted by this light blue dash line that that's just running to the northwest of our site. Um as well as these dashed white lines that mark the uh old-school street uh hiking trail and access road, as well as the uh conservation area boardwalk. Um as Jeff had mentioned, uh there's no residential butters uh alongside the site. Um so you can see here, we've marked um distances to our closest to butters from the closest uh piece of the building that butts them. So approximately three hundred and sixty feet away is uh Utopia Farms off of School Street. Um on one fifty-six School Street, we have about a five hundred and seventy's uh feet to that uh facility, um and the Family Medicine Associates off of Kit Glass Drive, um about eleven hundred and fifty feet away from the site. Um here you can see the access as Carlton and Jeff had mentioned. Uh the double, double-barrel um access drive off of School Street that winds its way up around the building uh with the fire access um turnaround here. Um and I'll zoom into this in a second, uh but the main entrance to the building here alongside that light blue.
Dan, just as an FYI, I don't know if others are having this issue. We, we don't see your cursor.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'll uh, I'll annotate. So as uh sorry, bear with me for a second. Can you see my cursor now?
Yes, but not moving.
Okay, let me just. Now can you see my cursor?
It, it's not changed.
Okay. Apologies for, for the delay on this. Oh, can you see that orange dot that is?
Yeah, yes.
Perfect. Um so this is, this double-barrel drive, as Jeff um and Carlton had explained, coming off of School Street uh winds its way around the project. Uh we have our, our fire access lane here. Um and the main entry to the building will be here, and I'll show that in in more detail in just a second. Um the building itself is a three-story residential structure above a one-story parking uh garage, and that parking garage is partially buried within the site itself. Um so moving into a little bit more detail here, um just going through some of the statistics of the site. Uh so again, it's over twenty-three acres. We have a a total square footage of a hundred and seventy thousand square feet in the, in the building. Um so a FAR or a floor area ratio of point one seven um and a site coverage of six percent. Uh as Carlton stated, the, the building height per zoning is uh twenty-five feet. Uh and we have three stories of of residential structure uh above the parking garage again. Um we have a hundred and thirty-six units on site, uh and they comprise a, a variety of different unit types and and unit sizes. Um we have forty-one one-bedrooms, um fourteen one-bedroom pluses, so a one-bedroom plus an additional uh living area. Uh thirty-two two-bedrooms, um and thirty-four two-bedroom plus uh units and fifteen three-bedroom units. So forty percent of the units are one-bedrooms, um forty-nine percent are two-bedrooms, and eleven percent are are three-bedroom units. Uh we also have a generous amount of amenity space, um both within the building and surrounding the building um onsite. So uh ninety-six hundred gross square feet of indoor amenity space, um as well as uh just under fifteen thousand squeats, uh square feet of uh outdoor amenity space that's contained within the site itself. Um the building also features two hundred and thirty-six parking spaces, uh sixteen of which are surface parking spaces and uh two hundred and twenty um spaces that are contained within the building's parking garage itself. So um out of, out of view uh from, from the site itself, uh so the parking ratio is uh one point seven three. Now to go zoom into the building a bit here, um just let me grab my cursor again, so as you could see on the, the site plan, again, you, you wind your way around uh the building to get access uh to the garage uh located here at the north part of the site. The um, the main building entrance is located off of the east side of the building here, uh which also features a loading area, uh that size very generously for um ambulatory building uh vehicles, FedEx drop-off, um loading, uh for moving, et cetera, as well as a number of visitor parking spaces on the east side of the building uh at that location. The, the amenity space, the amenity um area of the building is, is also located at that main entry uh and allows a direct connection through the building uh onto the north uh courtyard where all of our amenity spaces on the outside of the building are located. And and Leslie will go into that in greater detail once we're into the, the landscape um component of the, of the program. Uh the south courtyard here is actually non-accessible, so that would be, that would be treated to be kind of visually appealing. Um and and the build, the residential portion of the building itself is, as I mentioned, in H shape, um where the units uh sort of stack up through the three stories of residential. Um we also have utility services and trash services that, that stack through the building as well. Um and uh feed their way down into the parking garage itself. So these trash services stacked their way through the building and make their way into the garage. Where we also include secondary storage for trash um in all of our amenity, or all of our utility services rather. Just moving on to the upper floors of buildings, is again, you can see that the units stack all the way up um in this H shape. Um and really taking advantage of, of the beautiful site location we have, we, we've included um approximately uh sixty-two percent of the units having um balconies uh on the upper floors, um to really take advantage of some of the views uh in the natural site. Here, and and at the very top of the building, we do have an amenity um on top of the roof, so it's a, it's an unstructured um open roof deck. That's located on the, on the roof of the building. Um and again, that's, that's located here uh on the eastern side of the building. Uh moving on to the, to the elevations. So we really listened to the feedback that we, that we heard from the last hearing on October twenty-ninth of, of last year. Um and in addition to removing a story of the, of the building height, we've changed the aesthetic of the building to be more in keeping with um the contemporary kind of uh more conventional seaside character of Manchester by the Sea. And so as you can see here, we, we've kept a lot of the original ideas we had previously, a lot of these horizontal striated uh fenestration and clapboard siding, uh incorporating a really a, a kind of a neutral seaside palette of materials. Um so a lot of gray and white uh clapboard and panel as well as a uh, a wood-tone um clapboard that we use to, to segment the facade and break it into the smaller components that really relate to the scale of um a lot, a lot of the uh, the, the contextual architecture that, that you find around the site. And around, you know, Manchester by the Sea and the North Shore um in general. Uh this eastern elevation here also shows that the first, uh the, the one-story parking garage is really buried into the site at that point. So really, you're really only seeing three stories of, of residential um construction above that. And that view. Uh and again, really incorporating a lot of balconies into the design to, to allow residents to engage with the natural features uh of the site. Uh moving around to the north um and south elevation, so again, these are showing the uh the short ends of the building. So again, lots of balcony features here as well as a uh crown-related top of building, um to really bring in some, some shadow and um some natural, uh or some uh features that play off of uh local and contextual architecture. Uh these are some, some sections of the building, so here you can really see the relationship with the one-story parking garage here below the building and the three stories of, of residential above that, as well as the way that we're sort of um using the balconies to break up the massing and sort of uh cut into the massing um and, and present places where residents can really uh engage with the natural surroundings of, of the site. Apologies for this. It looks like we're having some technical difficulties with the uh, the PDF here. But uh this, this slide is our shadow studies of the building. I can kind of talk through it.
Yeah, I would, I, I would, yeah, I would skip over that. We'll get it for the record. We can prepare it. Uh you're, you know, present it at a future hearing. I mean, the takeaway on this project is, put it mildly, is usually we do shadow studies to show how shadows may or may not be cast on abutting residences. Here, we obviously don't have any abutting residences, so no shadows are cast over anybody. Um we'll make sure this gets uh submitted clearly for the record. And if the board or anybody wants to review it at a future hearing, we'll make sure it's uh, uh presentable. So Dan, why don't you move past this slide?
That would be, that would be great. The, the, excuse me, the other thing I'm gonna say is we're having troubles in Manchester losing power. So the quicker we can get through this, the better.
Yeah, we're, we're, absolutely. We're almost done.
Okay, 'cause I'm losing board members.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes. This, this is an image of the uh, of the front entry to the building, so this is on the east side of, of the building itself. Uh and portrays the front entry to the building as well as the um, the loading and visitor parking here to the left. Um again, you can see the, we're really taking cues from some of the contextual uh architecture along the North Shore and, and throughout Manchester by the Sea. Um and incorporating as many traditional features as we can within the architecture itself, so some of these columns um using some stone veneer at the base of the building to really help it tie into the landscape. Um and again, using some of these wood-tone uh aspects of the facade uh to kind of break that up into smaller sections along, along different um areas of the facade itself. areas of the facade itself. And then to move along to, this is a view of the north amenity deck. So really, playing on this being an active community with a variety of outdoor spaces and Leslie will go into more detail of this and the landscape architecture component of the presentation. But really creating a variety of spaces and and she'll she'll show this more, but there's a pool and outdoor bar landscaping. And a number of different features that that really incorporate that. So with that, I will turn it over to Leslie Fanger with.
Yeah, Leslie, you know, please, in in interest of time and everybody. You know, this is all submitted for the record, but kind of a Cliff Notes version of the presentation and we'll have time at future hearings to go more through our programming. So I would spend a little bit of time on the on the first slide. And a little bit more on the second slide because the views from the existing path were mentioned several times during our previous discussions. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I'm Leslie Fanger from Bowler, project landscape architect. Basically what you're, oh, I haven't shared my screen yet. Critical first step. There we go. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So the view that we're looking at right now is the overall landscape and site plan and it basically just shows the finished condition once the project is complete. Starting at School Street. We enter into the site and and the the view between the existing vegetation to remain, which is substantial. We have a nice big buffer of existing forest all around the site. And there's approximately 100 foot opening that allows the entrance to come up into the site. And when you're looking toward the building from School Street, there's sort of a layering effect of vegetation that will help to kind of screen the the base of the building. So you won't see any of the the garage facade. Or the turnaround. So we're being very strategic about how we place our vegetation and hope that that will help to kind of soften the the view from School Street toward the building. As you drive up this entrance driveway, it's a tree line. We've got a series of basins that are located along the drive aisle. Where we get to the parking area, the main entrance. And then back down into this turnaround, this will be some sort of a nice landscape feature in the center and then people can go underneath and into the garage. So some of the treatment that we've really worked hard to a main focus was to make sure that we can keep as much vegetation as possible. And the way that we achieve that is to have retaining walls that kind of step up through through the site and up into the hill and up to the site. Some of the the views from Old School Street, which is an important aspect of this project is that we've got a very substantial vegetated area that will remain. Come back. Let's see. So it's about 265 feet from Old School Street to the building face. And I'm just going to quickly flip to this next view. We're showing cross sections through the site. And when you're standing on Old School Street and you're, this is the view of Old School Street. And you're looking towards the site. This is what you're seeing. It's 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 a fairly dense vegetated hillside that when all of the plant materials will combine to help screen the view from Old School Street, which is here. And you're kind of looking through all of this vegetation and then we'll have additional trees that will help also to kind of combine to to add additional screening. You end up at the access drive and then up to the building. So I'll come back to that in a minute and continue on, go back. All right. So we'll stabilize the embankments that will be present from the this retaining wall that's at the building face down toward the building. It'll be all be wildflower slope seed mix that over time will start to show successional growth and re-vegetate over time. And on top of this retaining wall, we have additional screening that really we have our shortest clearing distance of this existing vegetation. It's about 100 feet from the Old School Street to where the basin cleared. So we're trying to just add a little bit of vegetation so that if there is a view that can be seen, which I don't think there will be. That that it's kind of minimized with some additional evergreen trees that will be placed on top of the retaining wall. And as we come around the drive aisle, you have additional stormwater basins that will all be vegetated. And some additional sort of garden type of vegetation here that we're creating a lawn and active open space for residents and an emergency access that will allow fire trucks to access this side of the building will also be vegetated with grass paved. So it'll just be almost an entire lawn area. We do have access walkways that are allowing residents to sort of go out the back and come around to the side, use this open space area and then continue up. And we've got a nice robust sort of foundation planting along the south side. And coming back around, same thing, we've got ground level patios and there'll be some nice screening so that there's a little bit of a sense of separation between the the public realm and the private realm in the in the patio areas. So then we get to the main entrance. And again, just to stress this point, we did everything we could to protect as much existing forest as possible. And so these these retaining walls helped to achieve that. And you know, there's a wherever we can meet existing grade without taking a lot of vegetation, we don't have a retaining wall. But along these areas, we did need that. And really, you're you're not going to see the building the full building height from, sorry, we'll go back to the from any of the surrounding public areas like School Street, Old School Street, or any of the conservation areas. So some of the details on on structure courtyard is in the north side of the building. We're proposing to have a sort of a shallow pool area. Some cabanas, you know, these are beach umbrellas and some nice flexible seating and a little fire table with nice houses and some vegetation down at the grade level. Nice patio with a fire pit and a place where people who live here will really be encouraged to come out and interact with each other. Helping to create a sense of community, which is really important for for any residential development that we provide opportunities for people to interact with one another. On this side, it's as Daniel had mentioned, this is sort of a decorative stone pattern that will look pretty cool from space and from the upper floors, but really the only people that really appreciate it will be people who live sort of adjacent to this southern rooftop area. See, so let's go to cross sections just to kind of drive home point that if we're looking at this cross section, starting at Old School Street and running all the way through the site and even through the wetland area and back up. This is what you'll, this is the the cross section. So zoom in a little bit on the building, you can see the existing grade that kind of climbs up. And it gives you a sense of, you know, how much or little really existing hilltop will be removed. And we're trying to keep as much to existing grade as possible for the driveway and the off grading really blends back into the existing grades very quickly on both sides. And on this side, as I mentioned earlier, we really want to try and maintain as much as the existing force as possible. And this retaining wall really helps to achieve that. See, and just to have a little closer view of what this cross section would look like from from this area at School Street. You can get a sense of, you know, you've got the the canopy and the lower vegetation that will help to further screen the the road or the driveway and the building itself. And let's see, that's about it.
All right. All right. Thanks, Leslie. So that concludes our presentation. I appreciate everybody's patience. The first presentation is always the longest because we're trying to introduce various disciplines, at least at a high level. You know, we'll we'll drill down to any into any of those areas in greater detail at future hearings as we get into the peer review. So, you know, on that note, you know, one of the key components, then if I could just make a couple concluding comments, one of the key components to the process is municipality retaining peer review consultants to review our plan. And we fully expect that to happen here and look forward to the benefit of that feedback. I think as some of our technical team indicated, we've already had the benefit of some peer review already as part of the process when we were before the board of selection. We would hope that the zoning board would entertain using Stan Tech again as your traffic peer review. And as DeRosa environmental, because those consultants already represented the town. They're familiar with the project and it seems like it would be an efficient use of 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 everybody's time. So, you know, we're while we're excited about this project, you know, we're not, I'm not naive, we're not naive. We know there's a group of Manchester residents that are, let's just say, less than enthusiastic about this application. We understand that. We're hopeful that this process will at least bring delight, the technical truths about the proposal. And, you know, while we can't force people to change their mind, we can at least confirm or and will attempt to show that we're meeting all applicable regulations. And if people do voice their opposition to the project, as we anticipate, we're hopeful that they can provide some substantiation to their comments or, you know, whatever supporting data they can. Because as the board and its consultants know, 40B is based on, you know, governing and applicable regulations and technical facts. So you know, with that said, I I only do 40B projects because the process and the requirements are clear. We're experienced and we've approved and built many projects across the Commonwealth. And I know the ZBA understands the 40B process, the boundaries of its review and the various potential outcomes from this process. I for one am confident that this development will be an asset to the town. And I'll guarantee you, if it's built, it's most likely going to be filled with people that live in Manchester by the Sea now. And that's a fact. And we also believe there's not another legitimate development in the entirety of the town that provides this maintenance free lifestyle that the level and scale of finish and quality we're proposing. Let alone all the affordable housing that we're providing that the town so sorely lacks. So with that said, Madam Chairman, we conclude our presentation. We'll turn it back to you. We're happy to answer questions or defer. But as I said, hopefully we can the town can start to think about retaining some peer review consultants because from our perspective, that's you know, a critical point in the process and you can benefit from you know, the their their expertise. So we appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Engle. I guess I have one question, and that is with respect to the traffic study that was done. It was done in July of 2020 when the athletic club was closed, the schools were closed. And the beach was closed to non residents. And I'm wondering if you would consider doing another traffic study with more updated information regarding the traffic flows in Manchester, because of course, we're a regional school system. So we have a lot of traffic from Essex to Manchester for the schools. And I'm not sure that the state parameters adjustments would properly reflect Manchester itself.
I'll confer with my traffic consultant, but I I don't see a reason we can't do some updated counts. I don't think it's going to materially impact the impact the conclusions. So, you know, I I saw a couple of people comment that, and I guess, you know, with the beaches were closed, at least partially. But as as people in Manchester by the Sea know, July and August actually have higher traffic volumes than other months of the year because of you know, the amenities it provides. But let me talk to my consultant about that. I I don't think it should be an issue if it would make the board feel more comfortable with with the analysis. I don't think we have to quote unquote redo the study. I think all the methodology is the same. I think we're just going to, we perhaps may update the counts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board regarding the presentation? I do not want to discuss the merits of the project. I don't want to discuss specifics. But is, are there things that come to people's mind as to additional information we'll need in the future?
Sarah, I have a couple of points if you don't mind. I noticed during that traffic study, there were some discrepancies between the data and the PowerPoint versus what I reviewed today. And so I reviewed a report dated September 2020, which did include the traffic counts dated July 7th through through July 10th. So specifically, I read in that report that the volume of of trips would increase by 854 trips during the midweek per day. And during the PowerPoint, it was presented to us that the the number was 602 trips.
So the the difference is really is a the the second bullet point on my slide, the number of units has been reduced since that report was produced. So you know, to the extent to the, you know, to the tier chairs question, updated traffic counts plus looking at those lowered, the traffic volumes now are based on 136 units. So that's exactly why you saw the difference in those is the traffic volumes. The volumes in the report, the peak hour numbers are, you know, five to 15 vehicles higher in that traffic report than what I just presented to you. And you're right, the daily numbers about 220 trips lower in the slide I presented. And that is because the number of units was reduced from 157 to 136.
Okay, it's just that when you've you verbalized it, that it wasn't really that big of an impact. But for me, you know, the difference between 854 and 602 is a lot.
That that's right. No, you're 100% correct.
And then another thing I noticed was that in in the report, you had suggested a travel lane of 14 feet for each side with a six foot median boulevard stretching about 700 feet. And I think you in your in your presentation, you had, I believe it was 12 feet or 14 feet with a four foot median with no boulevard section. So that's very different than what than the plans that we're seeing today, which I just want to go on the record and saying that the the plans as as I understand today represent two 12 foot lanes with really no boulevard section at all. Is that correct?
I think there's a short section of boulevard unless.
That's the entry section, but not, you know, not 700.
Not all the way. No, it's been, yeah, it's been reduced at the request of the fire chief. So the plans that you have are the latest plans which reflect what the fire chief is has reviewed for the project. And it did reduce that length of the boulevard section at his specific request.
Okay. And and we can also, you know, just clearly understand that there's no sidewalk at all leading from the building to school. leading from the building to School Street.
Correct. And, and John, to your point, the bolt, the boulevard or lack thereof, its inclusion or lack thereof got a lot of attention. We had included it for aesthetic purposes originally. We got some questions from the peer reviewer, from the fire chief. So we, we reduced the boulevard in terms of the, the median, if you will, and, and just had more pavement, quite frankly, at the upper levels. So we will make sure that our landscaping plan, our architectural plan, our civil engineering plan, all reconcile. I, I believe they do, but there may be a small discrepancy to the, to the plan that we were asked to, to design to.
Okay. And, and just lastly, I just want to leave it with, you know, I, I respect that, you know, the data doesn't support that there's a lot of car accident.
Well, I think, did he freeze?
I think he froze. I also am worried that the chair might be frozen. Maybe if you give it a moment, they'll come back because I. Unless another board member wants to jump in.
Yeah, this is Brian Solacey, as long as we're all waiting. The, on, as far as the traffic study goes, the potential revised traffic study, is it possible, is unreasonable to ask that we extend the study to see how it impacts downtown? The additional, specifically during the work week, I think one of the amenities of this project will be the proximity to public transportation.
Brian, I'm sorry, this is, I, I really apologize for interrupting, but I just want to be sure. If the town council is on, we might want to get a ruling about whether it's worth, just because you don't want to continue without the full board there.
That's true.
I just unmuted myself for exactly that purpose. Yeah, I would recommend waiting until we have all of the board members, because otherwise they're not going to be able to consider everything that, that is said.
When I, when I, when I mentioned a board member jumping in, all I meant was jump in as assistant chair to, to, to hold things off for a minute.
Well, I guess I'm the clerk, so.
For those who are.
We had a power failure.
Yeah.
The center of town, and I think we just lost, lost John Benares and Sarah Melish, our chair.
Yeah, I'm checking emails. I don't see anything from them as a secondary backup.
I, I've been, yeah.
Catherine Howe, Brian, Brian, this is Catherine Howe. Are we the only two board members still on this call?
And James, James is here.
Okay.
I'm still here, I'm still here also.
Oh, and Sean.
Yeah, I just reached out to Sarah to see if she's coming back on.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a geographic, uh, Sarah and John are neighbors, so that's why that whole neighborhood probably lost it.
John Benares just, it doesn't have power either.
Should we?
So.
Yes.
What do you suggest, counselor?
Who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Jonathan Silverstein, Town Council. My recommendation, since you've you've had a fairly fulsome presentation and gotten a fair amount accomplished. It's fairly late. I don't know how late the, the board was planning to go. You could wait and see if the other two board members are able to get back on. Or you could simply take a vote now to continue to the, the date that was already discussed earlier in the evening.
Oh, Sarah's back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on my phone. I lost everything for a while. Done, thank you. I would like to continue the meeting to December 1st. And deal with traffic and safety on December 1st.
November 1st.
December 1st.
December 1st, okay.
Well, will the town, can I ask a question? Will the town engage STAN Tech or does the town have a, peer reviewer or what, what, go ahead.
If I could handle that, just to, just to jump in, I think, I think the most important thing would be a vote from the board to request peer review services for, I think, traffic, environmental, site planning, and possibly architecture. And you could procure those later as long as you took a vote, I, I believe, unless town council disagrees, I think. You would at least just want to vote to, to say you want to request those things. And you could procure them under whatever way you procure services, could be going to these people you already have. If your town officials recommend that or we're finding somebody else, but.
Yeah, and that might not be the, this is Jonathan Silverstein again, that might not be the full scope, the board members may, I, I don't know, it's up to you, obviously. I know there's been some concern expressed regarding retaining walls. So you may want a geotech consultant. And I, I saw there was commentary earlier in the process from Beals and Thomas. You know, the, the board could delegate the choice of peer reviewer to the town planner, to the chair, to whoever it wanted to, rather than having to pick all the peer reviewers now.
Do we need money in escrow in order to move forward with peer reviewers?
Yeah, so how it's going to work is you're gonna, whoever's going to be in charge of picking the peer reviewers is going to get quotes. Is going to then go to the applicant and ask the applicant to put money into a, an account under chapter 44, section 53G, which is a consultant review account to, to cover those, those fees. The advantage being that as an accounting mechanism, that wouldn't require a town meeting vote to, for an appropriation to pay for those consultants. And once the consultants are engaged, they can be paid directly out of that fund.
Counselor, we're, you know, as a show of good faith, you know, we're going to work through your safe harbor assertion. I'm comfortable, whether it's Mr. Glenn or Sue Brown, I know the town has, or done together, has some peer reviewers. As I mentioned, STAN Tech and DeRosa. If you want to hire a site architect or whatnot, we wouldn't oppose that. Working to get some proposals, providing the scope is distant with what would be in many 40Bs of similar projects. We're not going to squawk, presuming the fees are, you know, consistent with the scope. And we will escrow those funds ASAP as a show of good faith, once we hear from the town as to who they've identified and the town can get them started right away and pay accordingly.
Brian, and I believe it's the ZBA that needs to sign off on those peer reviewers.
I guess the question would be is, are, are you delegating that power to, to Sue Brown at the moment? Or do you need to have those come back to you on December 1st?
No, they need to come back to us. We, we, we can have another meeting to go over that, just a general meeting.
Not at, not at December 1st, but an intervening meeting when you could vote. Is that what you're saying?
Right. I mean, I, I think that the, this project is the responsibility of the zoning board of appeals. And therefore, we should be signing off on any peer reviewers, that somebody should be presenting the options to us. And we should be making decisions. Am I wrong?
It's Jonathan Silverstein. That's, that's certainly a process that the board can follow. If you're going to do that, my recommendation would be to continue to an earlier date, continue the public hearing for the purpose of discussing and picking the peer reviewers.
Sarah, Catherine Howe, for what it's worth, I would, I would agree with Jonathan. I think we'd want to pick the peer reviewers sooner than a December meeting date, just to make sure the application keeps, keeps moving in, in case the peer review or the safe harbor that we've requested doesn't succeed.
So when is, when are Mr. Glenn and Miss Brown going to have some recommendations available to us?
Probably two weeks, three weeks is probably safe. Would you agree so?
Yeah, so Sarah, I've already discussed with the Conservation Commission and with Greg regarding, so traffic and, traffic and conservation or environmental, I think we're pretty already have a good idea or they know who they'd like. The others could get within a week or two for certain.
So that would put us to probably Tuesday, November 16th would be three weeks, right?
Yeah, and I think it could be done before that. Jeff or Jonathan, is it possible that they do that agreement outside of the, of the, of the hearing? Is, is that more administrative that could be done outside of the hearing or did they have to have discussed the peer review? I know the, the scope of it probably needs to be approved by Mr. Engler, but.
I, I don't have to, and I, I don't, I, I defer and respect Mr. Silverstein. But he, he, he can comment, but I've seen it done different ways. But frankly, I've seen the town just send me proposals and say, does this, does this fee acceptable? Is this scope acceptable? And I say, you know, yea or nay, it doesn't have to be done and based on all my experience in a public hearing process. So if, you know, if, if you and Ezra bring forth some, some preliminary proposals and send them to me. I mean, I, I, or do you want to get the, the board to say, yeah, we like this, and then you send them to me? Whatever you guys want, I'll be responsive and flexible. I, I have to think about though, one of the, did somebody, somebody said, is there any drawbacks to peer, to asserting safe harbor? I mean, one of the drawbacks is I have to think long and hard about escrowing 30, 40, $50,000 while we're under safe harbor, under the, under the possibility that the town wins. While I think that's very remote, do I want to write a check for 50 grand and have DHCD fine for the town? And the town say, Mr. Engler, have a nice day? So I'm going to have to talk to my counsel af- outside of this and, and think about how I want to deal with that. I'm sure the board can appreciate the position that I've been put in.
So, so if I could, it, it sounds like we could probably pick a date in about three weeks.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Who is talking? And have you asked for recognition through the chair? This is going back and forth.
Ezra Glenn.
Okay, because I can't see anything.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Right, so my recommendation is that we, if, if, if Attorney Silverstein agrees that we could include this as an administrative matter on our regular November 17th ZBA meeting, which is three weeks away.
Well, my recommendation would be if the full board wants to make a determination to pick the peer reviewers, which I think is, is perfectly within its right. And, and I understand the desire to, to have control over that. My recommendation would be just be out of concern that the discussion gets into the merits of the application, that you simply continue the hearing to that date. And you can take up the issue of peer reviewers and, and only that issue. And then move on from that and continue it to the next, the December 1st date that you were talking about.
Who's speaking? Is this Mr. Silverstein or?
It is, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. This is Jonathan Silverstein. So my recommendation would be,
Okay.
if the full board wants to vote to pick the peer reviewers, that you, and you want to do it on, I think you said November 17th, that you continue the hearing to November 17th for the purpose of picking the peer reviewers. And you then continue, if, if that's the only issue you want to address at that meeting, that's fine. Now, I just heard Mr. Engler say that he needs to give some thought as to whether or not he wants to escrow funds for peer review until before he, you know, there's a decision from DHCD on the safe harbor. If he determines he doesn't want to prior to December 17, you, you could decide whether or not you, it, it's worth holding that hearing session on the 17th or simply voting to continue it at that time. Or if you want to at least get that much done of picking the peer reviewers, you could certainly do that. But that's, that's an issue you can decide on that date.
I don't want to, I don't want to mix the 40B public hearing with the regular ZBA public hearing. So I guess I will ask the board is if they are available on November 16, continue the public hearing for the purpose of determining the peer reviewers needed and, and signing off on them.
That's the way in, vote?
Sarah, this is Brian Solacey. I have one question.
Yeah.
Well, so the, that meeting will be, the only thing on the agenda will be the discussion of the peer review. At that time, that meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no problem.
Sarah, it's John. I can be available as well, but I apologize if I missed this. Does a geotech report exist for this or not? I'm asking Mr. Engler or?
Sorry, I, I didn't want, I wanted to go through the chair, through the chair. We have done some preliminary geotechnical work on this site.
Okay, because it's my recommendation that, that for us to make a a decision on this, we, we absolutely need one and need that reviewed. I think that's a big deal. Respectfully, so that's my suggestion.
So we need the report first, John?
Well, that's correct. That's why I'm saying now to get that engaged or, you know, at least, you, you know, because things, there, there are lead times on things and, you know, for that type of site in the amount of ledge, et cetera, I think it's important to have a geotech report for us to review.
Okay.
Through the chair, we'll submit. Madam Chairman, this is Jeff Engler, in response to the member, we'll, we'll submit what we have as it relates to geotech.
Okay.
Just so I'm understanding from my own, my, my, just that, my own understanding is, is the current proposal that the board is going to get together on November 16th just to discuss peer review. Prior to that, Mr. Glenn and Ms. Brown will have gathered some proposals from different consultants that they will be sharing with the board on that evening. And the board will be voting that night to retain or not. And then on December 1st, we will be reconvening to, you know, discuss, I guess, traffic to the extent the traffic consultant, you know, is retained on the 17th and can produce something by the 1st.
Correct.
About right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So do I have a motion from the board to continue the meeting, the public hearing to Tuesday, November 16th for the purpose of determining peer reviewers and reviewing the estimates obtained by Mr. Glenn and Ms. Brown.
Sarah, this is Sean. I make the motion.
Thank you, Sean. Do I have a second?
Sarah, this is Brian. I have a second.
Brian, seconds. Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. I'm not sure who's here and who isn't. Brian?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Catherine? Approved. Sean?
Approved.
Jim, are you on?
Yes, I approve.
And Sarah approves.
James approves.
Sarah, this is, this is Sue. Do you have a time associated with that?
Seven o'clock. Meeting's row is seven o'clock.
Thank you.
And you agree to that continuance, Mr. Engler?
Yes, of course. Yes, of course, to the 16th, and then hopefully the first thereafter.
Right. Anything else? The board? The other issue we wanted to discuss is a potential site visit. What does the board feel about that?
Can I ask, can I ask an honest question? Because it was attended by thousands, but I do recognize some faces. How many members of the board attended the walk with Mass housing?
I did, Sarah, I mean, Sarah did, and I believe John Benares did.
I did, Jim.
Jim did? Okay.
Sean.
Also too, Sarah. Mr. Sean.
Were you there?
Yeah, he was.
Okay.
Sarah, this is Brian. I wasn't there, but I'm familiar with the site.
Okay.
This is Catherine. I wasn't there. I had a conflict, but I would love to do another walkthrough at some point.
Okay.
This is James. I'd like to do a walkthrough as well.
Okay. So do we need to do it now, or can we do it later?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I defer to Silverstein, but if the board or if individual members wanted to, I mean, obviously, we can't have a public hearing, so the town will need to be cognizant of that. But if two members, I think we only have, do we have two people or three people? If we wanted to do two visits, if people provided some possible dates or times, you know, we could, we could arrange that.
This is Jonathan Silverstein. Actually, open meeting law specifically exempts site visits from open meeting law requirements, as long as there's no deliberation. So the entire board can attend a site visit as long as they don't deliberate.
Yeah, so I'll work on arranging that, Mr. Engler, and getting back to you.
Okay.
Thank you for being willing to do that. I appreciate it. Catherine Howe speaking. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other item anybody on the board would like to raise at this point?
I'm not a member of the board. This is Ezra Glenn, the consultant. Can I just make a quick point?
Okay.
Just for those of you at home who are concerned about the fact that the power went out and a bunch of people got bumped off, do you remember this is all being recorded and would be available there after as well?
Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Sarah, this is Brian. I make that motion.
Thank you, Brian.
Catherine Howe, I second. Catherine, second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
That technically has to be a roll call, since they're on Zoom. This is Jonathan Silverstein.
Okay. Roll call vote, Catherine.
Yes, adjourn.
Brian?
Yes, adjourn.
Sean?
Yes, adjourn.
James?
Yes, adjourn.
And Sarah, vote yes to adjourn.
And I vote yes to adjourn.
And I do too. This is John.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.